Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular town council meeting. Before we begin, you can find this live streaming on our YouTube channel, and it's also being audio recorded by the media and myself. Row call, Jason Little, absent. Patricia Vahl?
Here.
Kevin Burke?
Here.
Michael Johannis?
Here.
Brian Warren?
Here.
First item we have on the agenda tonight is approval of the minutes from August 11, 2025. Has everybody had a chance to review them?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from August 11.
Have a first from Trish and a second from Mike. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say yea or nay.
Yay.
Aye.
Nay.
And all those opposed, say nay. Let be known it passes 4-0. We have comments from the public, anyone? Okay. Let be known that there's nobody from the public comments from the council. The only thing I have is that we're in the fall mode and a lot of activities are going on down at the park and elsewhere in the community. Just want everybody to be aware of what's going on. Anybody else have any comments? Okay. Not before I move on to the fire department.
You've got my monthly report for the month of August. You had 29 first responder runs, two fire alarms, two gas leaks, one signal nine, for a total of 34 runs for the month. October 25th, we are going to be doing mess and cabinet cleanup again, making new at the fire station. So, we're going to keep going on that. We did take a truck to Dale Paul Fest Parade. We had the new truck there and we spent most of our weekend full to fire. So, we were had a busy weekend. Yep. And I do have the last bill really upstairs. It's all done, they're missing one cabinet door, but it's supposed to be in this week. And don't pay if the sales tax is not added. So that is, this is the last one, it is all finished except for that corner cabinet door.
One of the things I would like to make note about that is we've made two installments on it. The original bid price was $73,379.61. The, we've made two payments, one for $24,459.88. That was the first payment. And on that bill, he had charged, let's see, $489.20 for a late fee. He was billing on more than a, or on less than a 30-day cycle, which we, you know, we pay more on a 45-day cycle because of, they have to be approved at the meetings. So I did deduct that from that first bill and had a conversation with him about that. The second bill we paid in August in the amount of $24,949.8, and he had put a $489.20 late fee on that one. That one did get paid in error. I was gone for the August meeting, so the full invoice got paid without that late fee being deducted. So per the bid price, I'm showing a balance of $23,970.65. The invoice is for more than that. The invoice is for a total of $25,315.98. So I just wanted to make you aware that by approving the full invoice, you're actually approving more than what the awarded bid price was.
Did, but the tax shouldn't be on there, right?
Right.
So that total bid, 25,315.98 is wrong.
Let me hand that up.
Yeah, I am right now too. So it's $24,459.88.
Which is on this back page. That's what's on the back page.
The check amount, okay.
But that's still more than the actual, it's still over than what the actual bid price is. Or the awarded bid price was. The balance due on the actual awarded bid price is $23,970.65.
Please say that number again.
And that number excludes the late charge?
Yes. That, that's the balance of the original awarded bid. So I just want to make you aware that if you approved the final bill amount, you're actually going over what the actual awarded bid price was.
By $489.23. Okay. So if it's $489.23, what was the late fee that we paid on the second bill? Because that's the overage.
Mm-hmm. $489.20.
So that's why. Okay. So we're just talking about a three cent difference. Is there a way to deduct that late fee from this bill? Because we paid it?
If not, we'll take it out of outside services.
I mean, you can.
We're going to pay for the upstairs, the steps. There wasn't enough to finish the steps out. We had enough in ours. We're going to pay, they're going to finish the steps out Wednesday.
So we're talking about a difference of less than $500. Is that something that, that can be?
The town doesn't pay late fees.
I know.
If the state board of accounts comes in and audits.
Which is why I did.
Jane will have.
Yeah, see, that's why I deducted it off of the first invoice and explained to him that we didn't pay it. The second invoice, like I said, I wasn't here, so it did get that portion, the full invoice got paid.
Can that be deducted?
However, this $23,000, I've already deducted that off. So what I did is I took the full awarded price and I minus what we've already paid.
So we're still.
So the $23,970.65 includes no late fees at all. That's just the balance due on the awarded bid.
So we're talking under $500 over?
Correct.
Okay. Is, is there, is that acceptable to pay like out of regular pay?
No, I would deduct a late fee from this invoice.
Right.
Yeah.
Which is what I did.
Yes. She said she already did that.
Yeah, that's what you do.
That still puts us at 400.
Because if the town pays it and the state board of accounts audits, then they're going to say Jane Lindsay has to pay that out of her personal funds.
Right. But you already did that when you came up with that number?
When I came up with the $23,000, I took the original awarded price and I deducted the two check amounts that we wrote, and I brought all this in case anyone wants to view it.
Okay, so if we approved the $23,970.65, then.
You will have paid the actual awarded bid price.
Did they, did they come to us with any change requests or anything to us?
Electric ran over, but it equaled out because the electric wasn't up to code. It was in code in 2012 when we built the building, but now it's all changed, the electric.
Right, had to change.
So it, it was spot on on the other one.
Well, you need an invoice showing your deduction for you?
I just need the approved amount. I will make the note on the, I will just mark out the late fee and pay.
In there?
Mm-hmm. But I need the actual vote to be what the balance is on the bid.
Right.
So you don't understand why it's 489 other than the electric, but it balanced out?
It's probably that late fee.
He's charging a late fee.
It's the late.
It's on here.
Oh.
It's the late fee.
Okay.
Here, I can pass this through.
I thought you'd already deducted it. Sorry, no, you deducted it. Yeah, so that has, so we're talking 20 cents difference.
All right. So I make a motion, we approve payment of $23,970.65 to J and R Equipment.
I'll second. Have a first and second from Mike and Brian in the amount of $23,970.65 that they, J and R Equipment and salvage. I'm sorry. Correct. Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Let be known it passes 4-0.
That's all I have on my field.
Thank you, Max.
Yes.
On your mess and cleanout?
Yes.
Can we get that on the website?
She usually does some water bills, doesn't she?
Yeah, we do put it on the.
Yeah, the water bills, yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Max. Zach's not here.
No.
And he did not have anything additional to report?
All right.
The trick-or-treat trail, October 26, 12 to 2, is important. So usually we have a lot of kiddos coming.
Yes, we do. They do that.
We're talking about Public Safety Day.
Oh, yeah, touch.
I didn't talk about that.
Okay.
Hello?
Hi, Tom.
Do you have my report for August?
Have any questions on that? Things are still, I don't know, this, this summer's been a little slow. I think we have a house, someone's going to build a house here real soon. So that permit work hadn't come in yet.
Is that in the village or?
I believe he said it was a phone call he got, said he's going to submit his stuff. I think it was in the village.
Oh, is it?
I may be mistaken, that it may be Holiday Village.
Yeah, just, just, yeah. Second, second block down, I'm afraid of, right. Okay. Ron's not, he's going to expect on over.
John Smith.
John Smith.
Okay, yeah.
Does that help you?
Yeah. I think that might. Anyway, so I was on vacation last, so.
Again?
Oh, come on.
So do we have permits on that or?
I'm sorry.
Do we have permits on that house?
It's, it's simple, the kids can work it.
Okay.
Other than that, I don't, I still haven't heard anything from Kirstens or back now.
We have not.
I have neither.
Only thing we did with Kirstens, we had it send something off to the state last week.
Yeah, for the ready grant.
For the ready grant, yeah.
So. Apparently they're still working on it. Anybody else have anything for?
Thanks, guys.
No, appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
I think everybody's got their report. If there's any questions on that. Whether or not it's kind of a slow month, which is refreshing. If you don't have anything on that, the only other thing I was going to talk about was Touch a Truck was, it went great. We estimated probably close to 300 people. Probably our biggest year so far and the hottest, which really surprised us that that many people come out. We had so many participants this year. It was pretty great, really. I've been doing it every year since we started it down at the community center and come up here. But, yeah, it went really well. And we have probably three or four of the people that's reached out to us since that said, hey, can we come next year and set up a booth? So we're not sure where we're going to put everybody, but we'll figure it out. We talked about maybe parking people down in that grassy area that I think the town owns that was going to be, I think less, and then was going to build something on, decided not to. And then using that gravel lot as a place to put people. So should be good. A lot of people turned, a lot of people.
That's excellent.
That property that you're referring to is owned by Cook Development.
Is that who owns it? Okay. I wouldn't be sure who owned it. I know Zach talked about maybe parking people there. I guess there's an agreement with the town that we could use that for parking?
We used to, yes.
Used to?
With Cook Development.
We'll figure that out next year. We are looking at having that. So you're talking about the trick-or-treat trail, which is amazing, and we usually get about 200 to 300 kids for that. So next year, the only complaint, so we have a committee for this, and the only complaint the committee got was the heat. Of course, that was the only complaint. Because people like free stuff and giving out a lot of free stuff. Helicopter landed, it was just a good time. Zach and I have spoke and the committee and I are going to get together and we're looking at maybe piggybacking off of the Halloween Trail next year, where that's from noon to 2:00, and then we do Touch a Truck from 9:00 to 12:00. And then we got all those people already there, and then they just, they go and look at all the vehicles and helicopters and trucks and then go straight to the trick-or-treat trail. It'd be in October, it'd be a lot cooler. So that's the plan, so stay tuned. We'll get that figured out. That's all I have.
Glad it was a slower month.
Yeah, it was a month on the road. It was surprising.
I'm going to touch on the renovations while you're up there, just in case. I have it under me, but James and I have been trying to get quotes to do the ADA renovations in the town hall. This is something that we've been needing to do for, I think, five years. I know when Kelly was here, it was something that was brought up then and some ideas floating around of how that can be. So our plan is, is the second glass pane on both sides will, you know, there's three. There's a door, a glass pane, and then two glass panes. The middle one will actually be a window of some sort to serve the public. So it's either going to have a roll-up window feature or it's going to have like a sliding feature similar to what you would see at a doctor's office or some banks or whatever. We haven't fully decided on those kind of details yet. But what will happen is when they come into the lobby, they will be able to go up to an ADA compliant counter that will be in the lobby. So they'll be able to go up to it, write their checks, fill out paperwork, whatever they need, and then hand it. So that way we won't have to do major renovations on allowing access into the office with turnaround radiuses and stuff because the lobby already meets that. So they will, they will come up to a counter in the lobby. That's the most least expensive way to be compliant and, you know, make the needs that we want. James is going to put a desk right inside his door, make that a small office. I'm not doing that, but I am removing the counter in my office. And the counter will be at that glass pane on the inside then. So we will have a counter on the inside and a counter on the outside. So we are in the process of getting quotes for that, which we'll bring to your approval when we get those. But if anyone has any feedback, if you have any further questions before we get too far deep into it, whether you're okay with that idea of making it ADA compliant.
So you're not talking about the outside windows?
No.
You're talking about the inside windows?
The ones like you see by the office door, then the window that's right next to my door. And same thing on James's side. He has the door to his office, you know, to his police department, and then that middle pane.
Yes.
That middle pane will actually be turned into a customer service.
Area.
Area. So.
So are those, are those doors, sorry that I don't know this, but are they handicap accessible doors going out of this?
They are not. So that would be the next step. We would have to look into getting estimates on push entrance to the doors, the exit doors.
Right.
The challenge with that is, is that, you know, we've got that air festival, so there's two.
Yep.
So we may have to look at doing something a little different with those inside doors, making that just an open.
Is that, is that an issue for a, like, is the breezeway a safety feature?
We will have to look into.
I know.
I would say it is, as long as the inside doors are locked, but if the inside doors are open, the breezeway really doesn't make a difference.
Right. And they're never locked. I don't think there's locks on them.
So if the inside doors aren't there?
If the inside doors are not there, it's not going to be.
Okay.
Probably just trying to keep the weather out.
Right.
There's an airlock.
Yes. Right.
Right.
So we may have to look at what some options are there. But that would be the next step, yes.
Right.
But we need to be showing progress. Because we're like approaching our compliance deadline of we need to be doing something.
Yes.
So we thought that would be the least expensive way to renovate that and still meet the requirements.
Right, because there's turnaround space. I think that's.
Because the whole lobby then is the turnaround space.
For both of us.
And honestly, we're both running out of space.
Yep.
So part of what that bidding process, Jane and I are working on is the state is basically coming down now, more so the law enforcement academy saying that your interview rooms need to be an enclosed area without windows for safety purposes of criminals or whoever you're interviewing or anything like that. So I was able to find a location where we'd be able to build a new interview room, and that would be out in that garage where state police parks their bear cat. They would still be able to park their bear cat there. I don't need, it's more so would be two walls. The door's already there. We would have an entrance to it, two walls and a ceiling. So it's like seven foot by 12 foot, it's all we need and a little bit of electricity. That's going to be part of this bid, but once we, Jane, I showed Jane where it's at. Really, it's just getting the boxes out of the way. But that's neither here nor there, we're just waiting on.
I emailed them again today.
So you just do an enclosed space there?
It'd just be an enclosed space there that we can use. We can take them in there. There's one way in, one way out. There's no windows they could bust out and escape while we're in here in a different room talking. So, and I think that's very inexpensive.
You guys have thought about this pretty hard, that's good.
Yeah. We've been working together pretty good on it as far as talking to different people.
Trying to figure out what would be the best.
Getting people in here and what would be the best for both of us.
Now, do you guys have a one-way glass where people on the outside can look in, but?
No. No, we have a camera system, which I'm going to speak. So we have an interview rooms, so there's two interview rooms in the county. One in the north, which is here at Santa Claus PD, and one at Rockport Police Department. The prosecutor paid for those systems. Now, both systems are becoming out of date, so I'll be working with the prosecutor, see if we can't, if she cannot fund us another one next year. And it's crucial for us to have it because we do so many interviews with these two places here. We do so many interviews here on criminals, or suspects, I should say. So it's crucial that we have one down here, and with the prosecutor paying for it, county. If county gets somebody down here, Dale Police Department's used it, conservation officers have used it, state police have used it. So it's important that we have an interview room in the northern part of the county. So again, I'm going to, if the town can fund getting it all built, I'll try to get the prosecutor's office to fund the actual camera system. Until then, we'll just move what we have over there if we end up doing it.
That's good.
If we move everything over there and then we get a new camera system, would it use the same type wiring or would that?
I think so.
Okay.
I think it would. And a lot of that we can do ourselves, like the cameras that, the door locks and all that stuff we put in, we put all that in ourselves. The Fobb's, and Brian adjusted the price. He come to me and said, hey, could you and your guys do the wiring? Because you got, we had to go up through the ceilings and.
Yeah. Go up and over.
It was a mess.
Yeah.
But we got it done. Everything's hooked up and ready to go. So I think the wiring would be no different.
Sounds like a great plan. Sounds like you guys got a pretty firm plan.
So that's good.
And trying to relieve a little bit from her, I, how many walk-ins do you get for us a day? It's been here lately, would you not agree that it's, I would say probably in the last two, three years, our walk-ins over here have increased by 50%. It's unbelievable.
It's quite a bit.
And most of them, and we've had some, unfortunately, some shady people looking for the police going over to her office and she's calling me saying, hey, could you come over here, this guy's, you know? So we want to drive up. Doing those glass and making it more like a secure location for like a doctor's office is going to make a huge difference.
Much better.
You know, one of the other things it'll help with is the First Amendment people that are making their ways around too. They won't actually be walking into anyone's office. They'll be at the lobby.
Right.
So, you know, I think originally when the ADA compliance thing came up prior to me, you know, Kelly had stated that maybe they would go in the door and then be able to go out a second, like have two, an entrance and an exit, like to be able to go in so they wouldn't have to turn around. They could just go in and out. But this way it just prevents that. It's going to be a lot cheaper to just make a window right there in the already existing framing. They're not taking out the framing, they're not, it's going to be quite a bit less expensive to just have the window there without actually modifying the whole turnaround inside the actual office.
You also have desks like here and here, which would be very apparent. You know, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't take much for people to get nosy. And so with this closed-in space.
It adds a little bit more of a buffer, especially for, you know.
Yep. Good.
So we think that's the best solution.
Yep.
Get some estimates?
Yeah, we'll get estimates and present those, but.
Good.
Just to let you know, we're working on that.
Good. Okay. Thank you, James.
Russ? Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Trust everyone as well. Just to follow up to the ADA conversation, some folks probably don't know or may have forgotten that I am the ADA coordinator for the town of Santa Claus, also Title VI coordinator. So as these projects develop, just please keep me posted of dates. I absolutely do not have all the answers, but I have some folks that I can go to if we need their compliance issues that come up, spatial requirements, et cetera. Just want to remind everybody of that. But the idea that you have the handicap accessible, I think that's a fantastic idea. Most logical way to go, so.
Yeah, so we'll be reaching out to you about the front doors. That's a whole another.
Yeah, I was just.
That's a bigger project.
Yeah, I've come up with a couple of things already, just sitting here and I'm going to stick to the wall. So, under trails, nothing really to report other than Keneese Construction Jasper did get the notice of award for the next level trail project out coming from Lincoln Boyd National Memorial, who just passed the high school. We're waiting on all the contract documents to get finalized and then we will issue the notice to proceed.
You think that's going to happen yet this fall?
Yes, absolutely. And if the weather would provide, there's a good chance it would be 95 to 99% complete by the end of the year. I mean, it's a really simple, straightforward project, basically peeling off topsoil, getting down to the sub base, putting a little gravel in, sub base asphalt, top coat of asphalt. We've got some signage, crosswalks to do, but it's very minimal. It's mostly all curb work. We do, we will have one bridge construction right there at the old tennis courts. That may take some time, but that's just putting in the bulkheads and et cetera. The bridge will come probably prefab and then just set it right on its foundation. That's all I have on the streets. I'm sorry.
How long do you think the block top plans will be operating?
Depending on weather, each year different. If it stays warm, they'll stay open. As long as the temperature's 35 degrees and rising or steady, they'll stay open. Under street department, I think that's a residual from the last meeting regarding the name change of County Road 1450 North. No. We haven't, we need to discuss that.
Okay.
Yeah. I for one am against changing the addresses from 1450 to Clubhouse. And there's two reasons that I'm against it. One is the agreement that we have with the county expires next year. So we'd have those people change their addresses, which I think is a pain in the butt. And then the county comes back next year and doesn't agree to have an interlocal agreement with us. Not to say that they wouldn't, because they always have, but there's that possibility. Then, you know, then do they have to change their address back if the county doesn't?
Who are the people who would have, who have Clubhouse Road address? None of the residents on this side of the road have Clubhouse. Like, you know, the people who live on this side. None of the residents on this side of the road have Clubhouse. Like, um, you know, the people who live on this side of the road. Now, I can't think of any. Thella is one. All of them are fourteen fifty.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think they ought to, I think it ought to stay.
Okay.
Fourteen County Road fourteen fifty north.
I was unclear. Okay.
Yeah, no, I, I don't.
And that segment of road is technically in the county.
Yeah.
The south lane is.
I'm sorry?
Right.
The lane on the south side. The north lane's in town.
Uh, once you get to Nate's Landing, it is, but I'm pretty sure what they're calling it now is still.
Oh, yeah. That segment between Nate's Landing and Old Two Forty-Five.
What is Nate's Landing? I don't remember.
The little brown triangle up there. Uh, it's now.
What the, what the country club's going to develop.
Right here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you're, you're right.
Like.
Yeah, so where the, the, kind of where the apartment, I mean, the duplexes or whatever.
Yeah, now those duplexes all have addresses on those little streets in there.
Okay. Oh, so they wouldn't be influenced at all?
Right.
That's good.
Those, they, they have street names.
Right.
But all those people on this.
On that side.
On the south side of the road would have their addresses changed or the name of their streets. Plus from the gate down to six hundred on both sides of the road. And I, I just can't see.
I think that's a fair concern.
Yes.
I mean, I, I've lived in Christmas Lake for thirty-five years and I've had to change my address four times because of some things I don't, and, uh.
Yeah, well, it's exactly true.
It's a pain.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and I understand, you know, it would be nice if it was named for a town road, but I think the inconvenience to the people who live there is greater than what efficiency we would get out of it.
Yeah, and I'm glad we're having this conversation. I wanted some answer prior to changing it on GIS. I got a change on Zion Road and all that.
Yeah.
Change to Mount Zion.
Yeah, I, I do. I agree completely with Mike that the name change to County Road fourteen fifty should be how we roll. Um, I don't, I don't see making those people change their addresses to Clubhouse Road, uh, for lots of reasons.
And we feel the same way about Mount Zion Road then too?
I'm assuming it's, uh.
I think, I mean, that's all that road is.
I should say, I assume that was brought up in a meeting.
Yes, it was a while back.
A year ago at least.
Yes. I think Mount Zion, I mean, that's all that road is. Yes.
Should say Mount Zion.
Yes, yes.
I agree.
I think that would help that church with publicity as well.
Yeah. Now, Kevin Webb.
Yeah, it's already been renamed Clubhouse Road.
Okay.
At least, the question is, what do you want to do about that segment from the old curve where it's no longer a county road, but it's in the county? The old Two Forty-Five that we're taking over.
Right.
To the hi, to the new Two Forty-Five. Those people's addresses still say Two Forty-Five on them, even though they're not on Two Forty-Five. They're going to have to change their address.
I think it all needs to be fourteen fifty north.
There's only two addresses, two houses on that part of the road.
Right. The old house that Ron Smith had bought and the one right there on the corner.
Right, but those are both owned by the same lady.
Are they now?
Yeah, now they're both hers.
Yeah.
So she would just have to change it. One, you know.
The county already has on, on that street sign down there, fourteen fifty north.
Which is like, why isn't it Two Forty-Five?
Even though their address is not, there's one down there that says it. So.
I think it should all be fourteen fifty.
But on GIS, there's still Indiana Two Forty-Five is how those two residences are depicted.
Okay, but that needs to be changed to fourteen fifty.
I don't know what the church is still, I wonder what the church is says.
Yeah, it might say it too.
Church is probably Two Forty-Five.
Yeah, it probably is because it curved around there.
Yeah, it's fourteen, six eighty-six North State Road, Two Forty-Five.
Yeah, that all needs to be. So the church is going to have to change to Mount Zion and those houses, those two houses, which do, um, do belong to the same one woman now.
Should be changed to.
Should be changed to fourteen fifty.
So you're going to rename Clubhouse Road to County.
They want everything named fourteen fifty.
The whole spiel.
The fourteen fifty north.
It's just much more logical.
Not really, because it's a town street.
Okay, so that, we, we passed an ordinance changing that Clubhouse Road, so what do we have to do legally to change it?
I have a new ordinance for you. It's ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero five and ordinance amending ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three, designate new public streets and amending section six point zero eight point zero four five of the municipal code of the town of Santa Claus concerning traffic movement. And what it does is it renames all of County Road fourteen fifty as to County Road fourteen fifty. So it's taking away the previous renaming all the way to, wait a second.
New Two Forty-Five.
The portion of old Indiana Two Forty-Five extending from the existing eastern terminus of Clubhouse Road, County Road fourteen seventy-five, to the new alignment of Indiana Two Forty-Five shall be named County Road fourteen fifty north. And the existing Clubhouse Road from its western terminus to its eastern terminus shall be renamed County Road fourteen fifty north. So you're taking away, Clubhouse Road's disappearing.
It's gone.
So it'll be all the way from the back gate of the village, all the way to the new Two Forty-Five will be County Road fourteen fifty.
Well, really all the way from six hundred.
Yeah, that goes all the way to the curve.
No, because it goes, it becomes fourteen, it becomes fourteen seventy-five at the back gate of the village. Cause it goes north a little bit, through the Ferguson property.
Oh, okay. Yeah, when I, when I went out there to look, the only two places that I saw signs, one was in, in the, the main intersection in Buffaloville, that road says fourteen fifty. And the next sign is not until you get out to Two Forty-Five. There is no sign at the intersection of six hundred either, on either side of that, so.
Yeah, there's no sign there, but the one in Buffaloville though, because it's a quarter mile south of the curve, is fourteen fifty again.
Right.
So is the Winkler house fourteen seventy-five?
Should be.
There's a portion of it, yeah.
The horse thing was fourteen seventy-five?
Should be, yeah. I don't know what they show up on. They should be fourteen seventy-five because right at the back gate where it takes that curve to the north.
Yeah. Well, Russ's house.
Actually, it's slightly before that. It would be right at the curve to the. No, it'd be a little bit right, right where it curves to the north is where it should become fourteen seventy-five. So it's before you get to the back gate, which is still in the town limit. So, you'll actually have to rename it fourteen seventy-five for that little strip right on this, if you see them. Right where.
Right where the home is.
Okay.
Yeah, right where the driving range is, basically. The existing driving range, whenever that road starts curving.
The only.
So we're not actually correct in naming it all fourteen fifty because it should only be to that curve. Then it should be renamed County Road fourteen seventy-five at that point.
Only address on that whole stretch that you're talking about that has fourteen seventy-five on their mailbox is Russ Winkler's mailbox. But all the ones before that, from six hundred up to there, have fourteen fifty on their mailboxes.
Even, uh, Jones's? Kenny and Kelly Jones's house.
Uh, Jones's?
Should be fourteen seventy-five. There's a fourteen, there's a sixty-six oh six East County Road fourteen seventy-five.
Wow.
Then her niece just built a house up there. It's also.
Yeah, that's fourteen seventy-five.
Harvey Moore. They're all, they're all fourteen seventy-five. Yeah, like U-Banks, U-Banks is four. U-Banks is fourteen seventy-five.
No, it's not extreme curve at all.
Wayne Griffin Shaw's is fourteen, they're all fourteen seventy-five. So yeah, technically it should be about a hundred yards before you get to the back gate of the village. You actually should rename it fourteen seventy-five.
So the driving range.
Even though there's not going to be, well, you never know. I mean, because if the country, if the golf course builds anything where the existing driving range is, it could be fourteen fifty, could be fourteen seventy-five, depending on where they put the end.
Max, you've got a GIS. So technically it should still be fourteen fifty until that road straightens out, turns west. Or it could be fourteen seventy-five until it turns west there at the top of that curve, past the back gate, go to fourteen seventy-five. Cause right when you pass the back gate is where it's.
It curves.
No, the curve's before you get to the back gate.
Yeah.
If you're traveling, if you're going east, it should be about a hundred yards before you get, about seventy-five yards actually, before you get to the back gate, it should become fourteen seventy-five.
Yeah, that's right, well, Russ's.
That's where it turns east-west to northeast.
See, I always assumed it was at the break, you know, where the road really breaks past, um.
The curve.
Yeah.
Nine degree curve.
That's what I always assumed, but I can see that curve, but man, it's mine.
Like you were saying, right at the back gate, it turns fourteen seventy-five and stays that way.
Until six hundred.
Yes, six hundred.
I can do whatever the heck you want because technically it's not going by the county road numberings. I mean, you're in, it's a town street anyway. We can name it whatever you want. Yeah.
I'm just curious, cause I live here, uh, is fourteen seventy-five, so fourteen fifty, is the fourteen seventy-five up to six hundred in town?
No. No.
Okay. So you can't change that fourteen seventy-five?
No.
I wish you could, because it's confusing when guys.
Be nice.
You don't want to go.
All the way.
Okay.
All the way to six hundred?
But the way that, the reason that happened, the reason that happened was when they were redoing nine-one-one addresses and the way that the company from Indianapolis that the county hired to do that laid a grid down and when the roads went like this, it went, you know, fourteen seventy-five down to fourteen fifty and then it came back. So you could, there's a lot of places in the county where you get on twelve hundred and twelve fifty are the same way.
Because what? At the sharp curve? What's it because of?
So, the biggest thing about all of this, in my opinion, is what does dispatch use?
At the sharp curve?
Yeah.
Is where it turns into six hundred east.
Six hundred, right.
Yes.
Right.
Six hundred east.
So it's just that one section that's fourteen seventy-five from that little tiny crook to the big curve? From this little crook right there.
Back to back gate.
From right, from just east of the back gate.
Here, yeah, right here to there is fourteen seventy-five.
And I don't know how they designated. I mean, no, it, no, it's all the way. It's all the way through.
Yeah, all the way from.
Here? Oh, it's fourteen seventy-five, so even the sharp curve?
To right here is where, I don't know how they decided whether this.
Yeah. Yeah, how did this decide to be here?
Well, I don't know how, yeah, I don't know how they decided, because this is fourteen fifty because of two.
Yes.
This is fourteen seventy, I don't know how they decided.
That would be.
Looks like they could have started here and said this is fourteen fifty up here.
Yes, that's what I.
I don't know how they came up with that one.
That's what I always assumed.
It's a tough thing and it's really a universal method. Anytime a road changes direction, it changes numbers. I mean, everybody does.
But it doesn't here because it's fourteen seventy-five already.
And then it stays.
Cause it's changing, it's changing direction. That was probably just the simplest way to do it.
Yeah, but they could have started it here and said, this is fourteen fifty from here.
Right, that's what I thought it would be.
But instead they said from here, it's fourteen seventy-five.
It's fourteen seventy-five, correct.
Even though you're not technically fourteen seventy-five, so.
It'd be easier if it has a name like St. Peter's Church Road.
True.
Why would, if the county and the town would together name the entire road something like Clubhouse Road, that would make a lot of sense, just like St. Peter's Church or any of these, well.
Leave Clubhouse Road to the sharp curve?
A lot of, a lot of the places east of here, because of the winding nature of them, they have names instead of like Brushy Creek Road, those kinds of things.
I'm just saying it should be consistent with what nine-one-one dispatches.
I mean, what, how do you guys feel about that?
If the county would change it, dispatch would change.
Yeah.
But then, then all those people have to change their addresses and the first office and, but.
Yeah.
I'm, you know, I'm just, that's my opinion.
All the addicts changing things, just, I've been here and done it.
Oh, me too. It's a bear. It's a bear.
It is. Um, I do wish that whole road was one, one name though.
Yeah.
At least until you get six hundred east when it makes that.
It just seems logical, right. It seems logical.
Should we get in touch with the county and see if they want to join us and change it, the Clubhouse Road or something?
It's a lot of people changing the dress on that road.
Boyers, Winkler, Joneses.
One, two, three, four.
Well, and once before that, I mean.
Seven.
There's about ten, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So basically, we gotta either live with the different names or go to the county and ask them to join us and change.
I mean, yeah, your police are telling you, I mean, your emergency people are telling you it'd be better if it had a name, the entire length rather than.
If it was just, even if it's fourteen fifty out there, I mean, well, it'd be nice if it was one, all, at least all the way down.
But that's in the county again. That's what we're about to get with the county.
Well, they in the county would have to work the justice.
Vickers.
And again, Mike's right, when they had that coming, come down and do the whole grid, that's how, unfortunately, how it gritted out. And there's several places like that in the county, because we get, we've been dispatched out there several times. And some guys will get dispatched to where the address is Clubhouse Road. Well, the only one out there that's Clubhouse Road is those condos that are way back off the road in the county.
No, those are Clubhouse Drive. There should have drive. There's a difference between Clubhouse Drive and Clubhouse Road.
So, Russ, how far, and this, I'm being redundant here, I probably know this answer, but how far do we own that road?
Uh, right there on the map, if you look in the dark brown areas.
Yeah.
In the dashed line, that is.
Okay, so where that, the development is, right there on Silverbell Terrace, we own that section?
We own the back gate, which would be.
To here, past the back gate to here?
Okay.
Right there.
Okay.
Okay, we now own from here.
Right, all the way to.
To here.
Okay.
But then this is all of the county. Here, the south lane was in the county. The north lane is in the town. Here, it's all of the town.
To there, okay.
And then like over here on six hundred, we actually own, you know, this lane, the other side.
Yeah.
But we have an interlocal agreement.
Right, with them.
With the county.
To clarify that, yeah.
That lets us maintain that road.
Right, responsibility.
Yeah, our responsibility.
And that's due to the prior, when you did annexations back in the sixties and seventies, you took to the center of the road. Now, when you annex, you take all the roads.
So, do we want to go to the county and ask them for a common name?
Kevin, I have one. What would you think? I mean, is there an answer to this?
That's their only, that would be the county's only solution. The county, I think, because of their grid system, will say, well, we can't name it all fourteen fifty. Because it's not fourteen fifty where it becomes fourteen seventy-five because of the grid system. But if you give it a work, a common name outside of the grid system, like they have done on these other roads, you know, out toward Evanston and St. Peter's Church, those, then they could be amenable to that.
So if ever the golf course developed that area they first logged, there's going to be independent roads back there. None of those roads would reflect fourteen seventy-five, right?
No, that would be a.
That would be independent.
It would have to have a subdivision.
Right, so that's not really affected. Nobody on this side of the road is affected because they're Village Road, they're Silverbell Terrace.
Right.
On fourteen seventy-five.
The driveway comes out onto that road that they will be affected.
So even, like, as you said, the driving range, part of that is fourteen seventy-five, but really no one would be affected until the hill. The hill that goes down to Russ, to Winklers.
Perhaps, I mean, it depends on where they cleared that land. I don't know what they're planning.
No, I know.
They could, they could put ten homes along there.
And then that would be fourteen seventy-five.
They would all be fourteen, no, they'd all be fourteen fifty.
Fifty there, be fourteen fifty.
Yeah, they could subdivide that and put houses on there. They've never come to the town and said what they're planning to do with that area that they just clear cut.
So they could get the wood, money for the wood.
So then we have a, what do we want to do or, we want to reach out to the county or?
I think, I think that makes the most sense.
To reach out to the county first?
Uh, like the EMA folks, EMS folks, I'm sure would be a lot easier for them to respond. And I think the people may, it may be a horrible thing to go through, but, you know, if your house is on fire, wouldn't you want them to get there as quickly as you could?
Yeah.
And I don't think they're getting there as quickly as they can.
No, I don't mind setting up a meeting with the EMA people and commissioner to be willing to go with me. I'll set up a meeting and I'll have them come here.
So we're talking to the curve or not? Or we're talking all the way to?
I mean, if you, whatever you're going to do, it should be from new Two Forty-Five to six hundred.
Exactly.
Right.
Whatever, whatever.
Right. Yeah, sure.
I mean, I wouldn't have an issue going out personally, myself, to the residents that live on it and say, look, this is what we're, the council's considering doing. I'm going to try to help out since we are emergency people and we use this road. It's something that's going to cause an issue and get their feedback. You know, four out of six may say, that is stupid.
But do we base the decision on?
Meeting with EMA.
Yeah.
And.
I think that's who we need to have a meeting with.
We can have one Monday, have two people, one president.
Coming Monday?
Yeah.
You should also, you should also get the postal office to call.
Christie?
Cause they're in favor of it.
Well, say it again.
The post office, you should consult with the post office too, because I know she's expressed to me issues with.
The difficulty of it?
Yeah, just like along one sixty-two where some people have one sixty-two addresses, some people have Holiday Boulevard addresses. It's, it's very confusing for the postal service also where there's different names and different numbers and trying to get mail to the correct place.
So our advisory board meeting is at three, or three-thirty?
Three thirty. You can just mail it out today.
Yeah, anyways, there'll be a county commissioner there that's on board with us, a county council, EMA director will be there, so if, two of you wanna come, I can, let Stephanie know, we'll have two council members.
And what time did you say, three thirty?
I, I believe it's three thirty.
Three thirty.
Next Monday?
Where?
Monday.
Monday at the four H in Christie, well, it's not called four.
EMA office.
Oh.
EMA office.
Johnny Howie complex.
Okay, where the recycle center is, yeah.
Three thirty at the EMA.
You have one by yourself, more happy to jump in with me, because I got a campmaster anyways. That's what everyone wants to be able to wonder. Yeah, can we discuss about, I don't think Stephanie would have an issue with discussing that in that meeting. So just letting you know, we'll make sure we get there.
Do you wanna visually detect to this meeting, so you can kind of explain to everybody what?
Actually, our, our EMA, our EMS director will be there also, which would probably want to hand put.
Every group has a rep.
Yeah, every group has a rep, it's the word that you guys are pointing me to.
Okay.
Yeah.
I should be able to go, somebody else can go?
I'll try. See what my schedule is.
You think you can do three thirty?
I'm gonna check.
Yeah, I know, if not, what are you two able to go?
I'll, I'll, I'll go if there's.
Okay. I'll let you know, Mike, I'll do some checking.
I'll probably drive separately, because it helps mine deal with the, whatever happens.
Yeah, you're down to my, you know, you're not like Steve.
No, just.
What do you call that meeting?
EMA council, yeah.
It probably, probably would be good to work, I know the Ferguson's who own the property there just sold like four lots.
I know.
Fourteen, what, fourteen seventy-five, right there by six hundred, they just sold those off.
Yeah, and once for sale again.
Yeah, where people were planning to build homes, so.
Yeah, once for sale again.
It'd be really rotten for them to get a new home built and then suddenly have to switch addresses.
Well, once we decide this, though, do we have to put it out for thirty days?
Just an ordinance is what you have to do, but.
Are you gonna have to have comments from the?
No, you don't have to have a public hearing, you just have to have.
Three thirty.
Two readings of ordinance, and the county would have to do the same.
Okay, at least we can get a feeling of how the county feels about it.
So let's hold it until we find out.
Intergovernmental cooperation.
Thank you for all the information.
Are the two of you planning on going, is that?
I'm going, and then he's gotta check his schedule.
I gotta check my schedule, I can wait tomorrow.
So be on hold, be on hold, be on call.
All right.
Okay.
Hey, next item is Casper Drive. If the council remembers I sent a primer regarding this issue, the folks at CLB Board reached out to me, I think with a pretty good idea. They would like to see, as it pertains to Google Maps, Casper Drive is gonna be deemed a private road or a dead end street. Obviously, public funds were used to construct that road, so I don't know that we can make it private. But I think, here's where I'm a little confused, so our Casper Drive actually goes into the village proper.
Right.
And town funds were, I'm pretty sure it goes right to the gate, and that's within CLB property. That may be a hurdle we may have to get past.
Their gate is south of.
It's prior to it, yeah.
Yeah, it's the back of the lots is where it goes, is where the town stops.
Okay, that's not what they told me, but that's fine, I, I think what you say.
Yeah, it has to be where the lots end.
I, I had heard that's where the white fence starts.
But that's possible, that's so that it, it is, because.
I mean, it's not, it's where the back of the Mayholt's house would be.
Yeah.
But it's still a public funds to the gate. I have ninety-nine.
From the?
I will pull out the old record drawings, get some footage, but I'm ninety-nine percent sure.
From the white fence to the gate?
Where the, where the white fence starts.
Oh my gosh, that's.
There used to be a gate right where, on the back line, there was a gate there whenever we started, an old farm gate.
Yeah.
That used to be the entrance to the village back in the.
Yeah, because that tree, like.
That used to be counted about six hundred.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm pretty sure that it was vacated, only outside of Cook's property is where it was vacated back in.
And that could be a.
I'd have to look back at the records.
Saying, I'll have to research, but I'm pretty sure we encroached that road's property with that road.
Yeah, so you think we put the gate in the wrong place, or we let them put it?
No, no, no.
No, no, no. It's been a few years since we did it, I don't recollect everything to detail, but I'm pretty sure the town fund were used to put that road in to where the gate is now.
All the way to the gate.
I mean, that's fine, right?
That's.
Well, technically, no.
Can we call it a dead end at the gate, but gosh, that still means people will drive it.
I need to research before we get too, too much into the weeds on this, but I'm pretty certain that's what happens.
Wow, because those lots go all the way out.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking less than a hundred feet probably.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but still.
Just for your information, I use Waze as mine for driving, I think. And when we came home from Indy the other week, it tried to route me to the back gate.
It always does.
And then, when I came home from Evansville, left for Evansville last Tuesday, it wanted me to go out the back gate.
You mean on?
From my house.
Not this.
The back gate, fourteen fifty.
Yeah, yeah. And when I came back from Evansville.
From your house?
Buffaloville and headed back into the back gate there.
From your house?
So that has changed in the last month.
I don't know that they've reached out to anyone, but Waze has, has changed, that they're not, they're not directing you to Casper Gate.
It tries to get you going, it tries to get you going the old six hundred east, the gravel road.
Yeah, yeah.
Where, uh, boost the people built the house back there.
Yeah, I know, I can't remember. Yeah, did.
Built that house, because my GPS, I was going to an address that I wasn't sure of on my call, so I put it in my GIS real quick and it took me this long. Why is it going behind the village?
To that dead end?
It took me a long time.
But back to what, what you said in the beginning, we couldn't make that, the village just couldn't make that a private road, but we couldn't make it a dead end road.
Right, and this is just as it relates to Google Maps and the ways.
Right.
Right.
Vendors are, so.
Yeah, it's, it's difficult, I had, I had one that showed a public road going through my property.
Yeah.
My farm.
Yeah.
The road hadn't been there since, well, let's say they'd minded in nineteen fifty-one or nineteen fifty-two. And it's still showing a public road going through the middle of my property. And I sent numerous inquiries to Google and it's difficult to get them to change. They did finally take it off, but.
So going out the back gate, is that road considered Balthazar? Till the, till fourteen fifty seventy-five, whatever that road's gonna be?
Yeah.
Is that Balthazar all the way?
I think so.
Of course, I know, yeah.
From the gate to.
Yeah.
Okay, can we make that a dead end too?
They could.
Dead end?
That's a village question. I'm understanding what you're saying.
Because people get directed there all the time too.
Well, if they would just get them to amend their maps to take off a ten-foot section of it, then it would show it's.
Then it would show it's a public.
People in that way, because if it shows no road being there, that's what they need to do, is just somehow get.
Amended.
The Google Maps, but I don't know if they will.
At least there, you can see the gate.
Yeah.
I never heard.
I have to let people back out.
They would be.
Oh, everybody, like I try to tell city people, addresses to my houses, my Tudor people, and they all end up in the back.
About once every two weeks, I come back to my farm, because my farm's up by Christmas.
Google sends them every time.
Now, that is all village property, so I don't know that that would be an issue.
Right, to dead end that.
Yeah.
Or, like you said.
Yeah, it's.
Say that that tendency doesn't even exist.
Yeah, they can do whatever they want with that.
Yeah, true.
Okay. Well, well, see what you find out about the white gate, or the white fence.
Okay, yeah, I will.
Because that goes into people's properties. See if we paid for it.
Well, I mean, also would include whatever width the buffer zone is, so you got.
Well, see, it shouldn't matter inside the villages, I don't see how it could guide people into there when those are all private roads inside of.
The side or the back?
Oh, inside of Christmas Lake, I mean, it seems like it would take them.
It seems like it would.
Somehow they need to redesign.
Every Tell City, every Tell City person I give our address to gets held to the back gate, every one of them.
Huh. I guess they've still got them on the mapping software with names on them, but it's just not showing that they're private.
Yeah, it's, Google sends them that way.
People were being directed to that road before we even paid.
Yeah, I know.
And they had a rock about a quarter mile down about the side of this room. The county called and said, Russ, would you please put a dead end sign up there, because I'm tired of pulling people out?
Yeah?
Yeah.
Well, this road thing's kind of a mess. Okay.
The next item on the agenda is quotes for the ADA remediation at the admin building, but I don't believe we got any.
Oh, I have not received any.
Yeah, I don't know what went on, whether it was timing, whether everybody was trying to finish up projects or whatnot, I had talked to a couple of folks who seemed interested in it, so. And that is all that I have on the streets. Unless the county council or public has any questions.
They do not.
Wastewater, I do have a couple of things that didn't make the agenda because I just got confirmation or the review copies today. If, I, I would like for the council, council to consider them, I'd hate to see a contract go without payment. But I typically wait for the reviewers to review these pay requests before I do and vice versa, just so that we don't miss anything, so I got that confirmation today. And I have reviewed the pay request, and these are in relation to the cured place piping rehab that we have done in the village, as well as in the industrial park. So the first pay request for consideration, again, the council will want you to consider, is application number fifteen. And we are releasing the retaining on the cured place pipe project, meaning they are substantially complete project, we've got a few minor details we're finishing up. But that pay request is for a hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and fourteen cents.
That's one thirty-two, three thirty-three, fourteen?
Yes, it's on the papers that were to the side. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, I'd make a motion to approve a hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and fourteen cents for pay request number fifteen to performance pipeline.
I have a first and Trish, do we have a second? Second from Brian, okay, any other discussion?
This is get paid out of wastewater capital projects.
Thank you.
There's no other questions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay, let be known that passes four zero.
Thank you. The next item is a pay request for the work that was done in the industrial park, and that is pay request number seven. And their pay requests were fourteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars, fifteen, fifty-nine cents, excuse me.
Where will that be paid for?
Coming from industrial park fifth.
Okay, we make a motion that we pay performance pipeline pay request number seven, the amount of fourteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Second.
I have a first and second from Trish and Mike, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay, let be known that passes four zero.
Thank you. I do obviously have the utility report for later. I don't know if the council has reviewed it and if they have any questions, but I don't really have any agenda-wise in the water, other than what is stated on the report. At the bottom, you'll see open action items for the water department. And I've just made a brief note about our twenty twenty-four validated water plot, it has been submitted to the Indiana Finance Authority. And the final plans for Mariah Hill Phase One have been reviewed and verified by us, and they're still looking to let that job out this fall yet.
Yeah, this fall.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm.
Russ.
Go ahead.
Can I go back and ask what's going on with the construction?
I was just gonna ask, we're backtracking.
On.
To fourteen fifty, fourteen seventy-five?
Year, whatever, what happened, because they said they were gonna start.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I'm with you now, so I, I don't know what happened, I got no explanation, they just said they're pushing it back to September twenty-second.
Okay.
To when?
September twenty-second.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry to go backward.
That's all right.
I was doing exactly the same.
Takes me a minute to catch up.
Yeah. It's okay, all of us. All right, thank you. Hey, down on, uh, twenty-fifth of December, is that what it's called, December twenty-fifth, the road behind my house, snowball.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, what, did something happen down there in the woods, a water issue, it was last month? Yeah, you guys were down there?
Yeah, on December twenty-fifth, right there by Rondell Falls, or Rondell Falls.
Rondell Falls, yeah, you, I think you were even maybe there.
I was there?
Yeah, I know, across from Todd Greenham's house.
It's scary, but possible.
Across from Todd Greenham's house, down in that woods.
It was a main leak Friday morning and then.
Oh, it was a main.
So, we have had several service waterline issues.
Okay.
Caused by the dry weather, I think right now, we've got about five open leaks that we're working on, so. But I, I can't, I can't speak to that.
Yeah, I think it was a main leak, I think that's what.
The lines, the lines, the lines split for a while, yeah, they were down there, some guy noticed it running water down the ditch.
Yeah.
Tom, uh.
Oh, the neighbor.
Yeah, anyway, they noticed it about eight o'clock in the morning, but they called it in at like four-thirty in the afternoon.
And then everybody.
Guys were down there at like.
It was late, yeah.
They said, oh, yeah.
It was late on a Friday.
Yeah, if it was a main, we were able to fix it, what we call live, so that's why I know all the advisors were issued, so we basically fixed them under pressure.
Yeah, it was a pain because it was in the woods, they had to like get through some trees and stuff, so.
Okay.
Okay, I just wondered, I just saw.
Yeah.
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 Thank you, you knew more than I did.
Well, I stopped by my side by side as I was driving by.
Okay, okay.
I was just giving them some grief, because they were out there on Friday.
I know, it was Friday night work.
Friday night work.
It was awful, it's always.
Actually split about, about three or four feet of the line, actually split.
It's always the weekend.
Yeah, and, and I get that, folks aren't home during the weekend, I mean, we get our calls at three thirty, four o'clock, well, I just got home and I have no water, so.
Yeah.
That's just the nature of the beast, so.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to touch on the water thing too, the water board meeting, we'll be holding a special meeting on October second at six P M for bid openings for the Mariah Hill project.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
I have nothing else about the report unless you guys have a question. I guess I should point out one thing, about three quarters up on the page in the bottom on the right hand side, you'll see a little rectangle that has SSO slash bypass.
Yeah.
Okay, you'll see that I didn't note a bypass there, we did have another force main rupture, actually in the boat parking area in CLB. So I have to report those to IDEN, it was the weekend that I was out of town, it was a Monday night, I believe, so. The guys were able to fix it relatively quickly, it was just a small little break in the line, so. But anyway, you guys will start noticing, I'll put bypasses or overflows in that little rectangle right there.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm up?
You're up.
As I believe everyone's aware, there was an issue recently with why the town does not provide snow removal within the Christmas Lake Village or on Christmas Lake Properties roads. As I believe everyone's aware, that those are private roads. There was also some comparison made to the fact that we provide police protection, but there is a specific statute that provides for the town to contract with not just Christmas Lake, but other private business owners, holiday foods. That's how we can enforce holiday foods, that's how we can enforce traffic regulation in Lake Rudolph on holiday work property. Any business, yeah, business owners can contract, like Eastland Mall in Evansville can contract with the Evansville Police Department to provide those services. Snow removal is a completely different animal. And there's several reasons why we can't. Obviously, the gate is there, those are private roads, they have to remain private roads. The deed from Santa Claus Land Inc. to Christmas Lake Properties Association actually provided that, I actually made a copy of it. In the deed from Santa Claus Land to Christmas Lake Properties, it states, "The grantee, which is Christmas Lake Properties, for itself, its accessors and assigns covenants and agrees that it will provide and maintain sufficient guards, gatehouses, or other security measures to ensure that the streets and roadways of Christmas Lake Village shall remain as private ways for the use benefit and convenience of the lot owners and their privies, and that such roadways shall not be open to the general public." So obviously, what would happen if they took down the gates? I don't know. Cook Development could come in as the successor and claim that they own the streets. I doubt they would want them.
Yeah.
They actually could probably at that point claim a reversionary right, take back the lakes, take back the streets, take back the rec center and say, we're setting up a new homeowners association for all the, I don't know, I don't know what would happen. Theoretically, who knows? But for all intents and purposes, because of those gates, those are private streets that the town cannot provide public services on.
And they can't do that because it's tax money. The roads are maintained for.
Not with local tax money. Roads and streets are typically maintained through two other funds, MVH funding and local road and street funding that we receive from the state of Indiana. Some of that is apportioned based upon population, so the people in Christmas Lake do count toward the population, but that's like local streets, I think it's 80/20. 20% of the money that we get from local road and streets is based upon population. 80% of it, though, is based upon the number of roads in our road inventory. Christmas Lake's roads do not count toward our road inventory, so the bulk of the money comes from that and is apportioned based upon the number of public streets that we have in our inventory. So it's not really, it's not really local tax dollars going into it, it's the gas tax and probably soon to be wheel tax that will go into funding our streets. I mean, I don't, I haven't broken apart the budget and seen exactly how much is in the street department budget versus how much we get from local road and streets and MVH funding, but it's all paid through gas tax, so. And even if public money from local property taxes does go into it, it doesn't matter. We can't provide services any more than Trish can't call up Russ and say, hey, I want you to come over and clean my driveway. Those streets are just like your driveway, for all intents and purposes, from a legal standpoint. You can't have the town doing work onto your private property, that's the private property of Christmas Lake Properties Association. Long story short.
Thank you.
There's no way to do it. I mean, they've talked about contracting with the town, I don't know that there's any way that the town could do that even, I haven't researched that thoroughly, but.
Are those roads on a normal, like, are they like the regular roads? Are they up to par for equipment that?
Not necessarily. And again, the town has its own set of specifications.
Right.
One of the issues that I see from the trenches is that they have more miles of road ability.
Lots. I mean, we'd have to double everything.
That would be a valid point, though, we would probably have to ensure that the streets are meeting our specifications.
Well, yeah, I mean, theoretically, if, if in theory they took down the gates, that would be one possibility, is Cook Development takes them over, puts up a toll booth or whatever they want to do to keep, maintain them as private. Or the town could agree to take them over as public ways, but then we would go back to our subdivision ordinance. It's basically a subdivision that was built without the, well, way before subdivision ordinances came into being, but just like now, when you build a subdivision, the town specifies it has to have a certain amount of underlayment, has to have under-road drainage, has to have a certain thickness of asphalt, which I'm sure the thickness of the asphalt, they've been around some.
It's just fine.
But they have no drainage under them, they have, you know, that's the big issue is the underlayment and things. So you could always do borings and things to see if the town wants to take them over if that ever happened, but I don't see it ever happening.
I mean, I can't even imagine, I was talking to somebody about that, how we would have to double our forces. Those roads would all need to get up to par and the state's cutting funding.
And you have to, and you have to take the gates down.
Yeah. And you know, every ordinance and all of the rules that have been updated, just like amendments to it, tell the people who live there, this is a private community. So it's a, it's a catch, but.
Even if the town were to, if, and I haven't researched this in depth as far as whether the town by contract could agree to provide the service over there, but I can say this, this, my advice would be if, if you offer it to Christmas Lake, if you say, we're willing to provide you with snow plowing services of all of your streets, you would also have to offer that to the general public. So if holiday foods, if you're paying, if they're paying you a nickel a square foot for snow removal each time, I could come in and say, I want my law firm parking lot, holiday food, and come in and say, we want the town to do that for us too, because, again, as long as they're private streets, they're treated just like any other person.
Yep.
Well, especially since they don't pay taxes. We do.
Yep, thank you for clarifying that.
Okay. So I assume that's the last we'll hear about that. Okay, we do have a statement of benefits from Kimball. And it is to put in a flat pack product packaging equipment, which they basically indicate they're not going to add employees, they're not going to add salaries, they're basically going to maintain the current ones. They're estimating the value of construction, the cost of construction to be $2.5 million, and they're assuming the assessed value will be $750,000. So they have asked you to approve an abatement of the taxes on those improvements.
Let be noted, we have nobody from Kimball Furniture Group here in the chamber tonight, so. Well, what's everybody think?
Well, I would say, think that since they're investing money into that plant, that means they intend to maintain it for a while.
Which is a positive.
It's good to keep them.
Yes.
Keep them here, because they have closed at one time, I know, 36 different facilities in other towns in southern Indiana and northern Kentucky, and if we can get them to continue to invest in this community, then I think we should give them the abatement.
So is that your motion?
It is.
Wait, wait, wait. It's not that easy. Do you want it to be, do you want it to be on the same terms that we, that previously were granted with the 10-year declining percentage?
Right.
The 100% the first year, then 90, 80, 70, 60, for 10 years?
All right, so I make a motion to approve the, the numbers that are outlined in the statement of benefits of personal property submitted by Kimball.
With the 10 years?
And the passage of resolution number 2025-03, a resolution approving a deduction for a tax abatement in an economic revitalization area for Kimball Furniture Group LLC.
2025-03?
Yes. I, and before you, go ahead and get a motion in a second on the table, but I do want to mention something.
I have a first.
Oh, second.
And a second from Trish.
Further discussion?
Yes, please.
Now, there was, I did not prepare it in the resolution, because I don't know that we've ever done this, but there's some confusion. Kimball is saying that they paid money to the town on the prior abatements of some nature, they don't know exactly, they couldn't explain exactly what they paid either. Nobody knows. There is a mechanism where you can require them to pay a fee for the deduction with a formula, where basically it's a, it's called a PLU, Payment in Lieu of Taxes, where it makes the town whole to some degree for the taxes that you are abating. I just wanted to bring that up, because they thought they paid this before, but I don't know that they have.
I don't ever remember that.
They did make a couple payments, I would have to pull, I didn't pull that stuff, but they did make a couple payments several years ago. I would have to pull those to see exactly what those are for, but since I've been here, they have not paid for this.
So we don't know exactly why they made payments. But I, I'm pretty sure, I mean, I've prepared them all in the past 25 years, so I never remember having to.
Could that have been something with their water system, the flow meters or something like that?
They did have to apply, did eventually obtain a, but that was like $400 plus.
I haven't seen, I don't know anything about the financials, I just know Jane had brought to my attention that they wanted to know if they had to pay for this, and to my recollection, you've never put a PLU on any of your abatements with them to force them to pay.
I don't ever remember us talking about them paying us any money.
Me neither, nothing like.
I, I think I brought it up before, that you have this right to do that if you want to.
If you would like, I can pull those invoices from several years back and see what they are for. You know, in our computer system, I can only see amounts, and if they put a description in there, which they did not put the description to match the abatement in those payments, so I wouldn't know what those payments are for unless I pull the documents.
And it wouldn't be a round number, though, that's the thing, it wouldn't be a round number, because it's a formula that the county auditor has to go off of.
And these were round numbers.
Do you recommend we do a payment in lieu of taxes?
I mean, it's a pretty negligible amount of taxes, it's $750,000 in assessed value, which.
So does our decision on this have any, any.
No.
Bounding on what they paid in the past? Okay.
No, and I think we've been audited for those years.
Yeah, oh, well, this was several years ago.
So as long as Kimball's okay with it, then.
Yeah, so I keep my motion, then.
Yeah.
My second.
Okay, so I do have a first and second from Mike and Trish. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. All those abstain, it'd be me, so it'll be three to zero to one.
Yep.
I abstain because my wife's employed behind that.
Okay.
Thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome. Industrial Park Land, I had sent an email to Dylan right after the last meeting, I have not heard back from him on the part about the commercial versus residential, on whether he still wanted it, even though it doesn't have a commercial, or a residential use. So, I don't know. Anyway, I'll get, I'll try to text base with him again.
Okay.
Tell him to give me a call tomorrow, you'll see him before I do. Don't you see him regularly? I thought so. You can always mention, yeah, tell him to give me a call tomorrow.
Okay.
You done, sir?
That's all I've got.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Okay, so the first thing I have up is, tonight is our public meeting for the 2026 budget. It's not going to get adopted until October's meeting, but tonight is just the public hearing, no public is here, but we will still hold the meeting, so I need a motion to open a public hearing for the 2026 budget. It's resolution 2025-05, a resolution for appropriations and tax rates.
So you need a motion for that?
I need a motion to open it.
To open the public hearing.
I have a second.
I'll second it.
First and second from Mike and Trish to open the public hearing. Anybody have any comments? Not?
Okay, so I will read what the budget has for presentation. The Casino Riverboat Fund, $17,500. Rainy Day, $75,000. The general budget, $1,036,579. Local roads and streets, $60,000. Motor vehicle highway, $169,350. Cumulative buildings, $75,000. Police, $3,000. That is not the actual police.
Right.
Budget in the general, this is a special fund for Town Marshal Fund is what we call it. Cumulative fire special fund, $74,000. Park and rec, $194,000. Cumulative capital improvements, the cigarette tax, $30,000. Cumulative capital development, $100,000. Economic development income tax, ceded, $270,000. Redevelopment general, $5,000. Industrial development, $50,000. TIF A and C allocation, $779,800. User deferral program, $1,000. Law continuing ed, $1,500. TIF industrial, $475, $200,000. Santa Claus Trail, $219,000. Opioid unrestricted, $3,000. Opioid restricted, $2,000. Mount Zion Road Highway 245 Fund, $250,000. The only thing I would like to bring note to is the user deferral program. I did lower that from the original budget was $1,500, which was pretty much everything we had in that fund, and I did lower it to 1,000, so we would have a little bit of a buffer going into the 2027 budget. I don't feel like we're going to need that full 1,500, so I did lower that to 1,000. That's the only change that was made. Any questions about any of it? Okay, we also have the meeting scheduled for our regular town council meeting, which is on October 13th, 2025, to adopt the budget. That is a holiday, it's Columbus Day. There was a suggestion to move that town council meeting to another date, so that needs to be discussed, because we would then have to move the already advertised budget adoption date as well. So that needs to be discussed during this budget public hearing.
Did you find anything out?
I did, I contacted Robert Morris and he said that we can change it. He said that we would have to send him an email and then he would contact Gateway to get the change, the date changed on the Form 3. He has to give Gateway 48 hours to get the change done, and then 48 hours has to be posted before the new adoption date, so we would have to have basically a week's notice, which we are within that, to be able to move that date if you guys choose to do that.
Do we really need to move that date?
I know, are there events going on? There are no events.
It's a holiday for the employees.
But does it, you will be closed?
The town offices will be closed that day. Right. So it's a, for the department heads, it would be a holiday that they would be coming in for, for the town council meeting, so.
My suggestion was move the Monday before for the first Monday, or move it to like the Wednesday or Thursday of the same week.
If we are going to move it, I would prefer to have it the Wednesday. The Monday before would be the day before the water board meeting, and that would just be.
Is it Tuesday, the 14th? Is that not an option?
It doesn't make any difference to me what day we move it to.
14th's not an option, Tuesday, the 14th.
Yeah, that would be, yeah, because the water board would be prior to that, so that would be an option as well.
I would not, Bella, make it on the 14th.
Okay, 15th is, I'll just cancel when I have.
Well, if the department heads, I mean, Jane says he'll be here regardless.
I think the main problem is, will you?
I don't.
Have to work during the day Monday, if we have a board meeting Monday night?
Yes, but we've, I've done that before.
So are you, department heads, okay with the 15th Wednesday? And then you'll have the day off Monday, not have to work, like you're supposed to.
It doesn't matter.
It does.
So let's move it to the 15th.
Is that okay with everyone? Are you okay with Wednesday, the 15th?
Yeah.
Same time?
Same bat time, same bat channel.
So I will notify the DLGF of our adoption meeting change and get that process underway. Any other comments or questions about anything with the budget?
I understand it was a very difficult time for you, that conference and all of that information that you've gleaned, and I want to say, from me and from the board, we appreciate your service and your steadfastness.
Budget season's always challenging. This year's not so bad, next year will be much more involved if we don't get some legislative changes between now and then. But that's for next year to worry about, right?
That's right, we don't worry about it right now.
Any other? Okay, then I ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing about the budget.
One second. I have a first and second to close the meeting from Trish and Brian. Any other discussion? If not, a motion that we go to close. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Let be known, the public session has closed.
Okay, also, um, in regards to the budget, but separately, at the same time, I have Resolution Twenty Twenty-Five dash O six. This is a resolution to reduce the following fund accounts within the town of Santa Claus's two thousand twenty-five budget in order to fund the two thousand twenty-six budget. I have three funds that I'm asking for a reduction in. I have the local roads and streets by forty thousand. Are you still okay with that? Okay. User deferral program, three hundred dollars and the TIF A and C by six hundred thousand. The six hundred thousand is what we budgeted for two thousand twenty-five for the park renovation. We have that also in the two thousand twenty-six budget. So we'll be reducing it this year to be able to spend that amount in two thousand twenty-six if, if need be. So the total in reductions I'm asking for out of the two thousand twenty-five budget is six hundred and forty thousand, three hundred dollars.
Make a motion to approve Resolution Twenty Twenty-Five dash O six, reducing the budget by six hundred and forty thousand, three hundred dollars.
Second?
First and second from Trish and Mike. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favors, uh, to approve this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Let be known, it passes four zero.
The next resolution I have is Resolution Twenty Twenty-Five dash O seven. This is a resolution we do every year around budget time as well. And it is to move five thousand dollars from the rainy day into the redevelopment commission in order to fund that five thousand dollar budget. This is something that's just done every year, to move money from the rainy day into the redevelopment commission.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Twenty Twenty-Five dash O seven.
Please. Brian, uh, I have a first from Mike and a second from Brian. Any other discussion on this? If not, we can have approval for Resolution Twenty Twenty-Five dash O seven. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Let be known, it passes four zero.
Okay, um, we already talked about the ADA renovation. We talked about the October, October meeting change. The only other thing I have to talk about that's not on the agenda is the office chairs that are in the hallway out there. We have been slowly replacing office chairs as they have ripped, tore, had extreme wear on them. We've been doing it over the past couple of years. We've got five chairs now that are in excess that I am asking the council to be deemed of no value. I don't feel like we can resell these office chairs for any money to make it worthwhile, publicizing it and all the other things that have to go along with selling them. We're not going to get our money back out of the thing. I did put the chairs out there for you guys to view prior to the meeting so you can see the condition of them before you vote to deem them of no value. But if they are deemed of no value, then I am able to just dispose of them. So I'm asking you guys to consider, there are five chairs out there.
Looked at them, they're all damaged or worn.
They look pretty mad.
Also looked, see if we could take parts off one and make one chair. I don't see that happening either.
Heven Burke did try to salvage the taxpayer money by combining all five chairs into one. He was unsuccessful at his venture, but.
I, I make a motion that we deem the chairs, whatever it is.
No value.
Deem them of no value.
Okay, do I have a second? One second. I have first and second from Mike and Brian on the chairs. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor to issue no value, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Let be known, chairs are no value.
Okay, I don't have anything else except for vouchers.
Uh, they gave an email or a text, they're going to put a burn ban in.
Oh, shit. Okay. So Max Meyer just announced that, um, the commissioners will be signing a burn ban to take, to take effect, and he will be presenting this with a copy after the commissioner sign it.
Is that enforced? If it happens in Christmas Lake Village, is it enforced in the village by the village or by the police force?
It's enforced by fire department.
It usually doesn't apply if it's in a burn pit, does it? Usually whenever they do, there's, there's exceptions on them.
Okay, there was, there was an open, um, burn on the way out on Balthazar. I don't know if you, where you came from. Okay, I just wondered, that's the only reason, because I thought, oh, I saw something, so, okay.
Any other miscellaneous items? Nope, okay. So I'm going to move on to vouchers. I have general vouchers in the amount of eight hundred and twenty-three thousand eighty-one dollars and twenty-four cents.
Make a motion that we pay general eight twenty-three, eight hundred and twenty-three thousand eighty-one dollars and twenty-four cents, sorry.
And I just want to, before you approve, I just want to comment on some of the expenditures in here, which is the reason it's so high. We did have a voucher in the amount of, uh, I can't find it right offhand. Oh, here it is, four hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred and seventy dollars and two cents for the paving. That is coming out of the Community Crossings Grant. Also, our TIF bond was due on August first. So that was also a big chunk of change. So I just like to always let you guys know.
Thank you, it's huge.
If it's extraordinarily high, where some of that money went. Of course, I always have the vouchers here for you to review, but that's why it was in the eight hundreds this time. We did have quite a couple that were very high.
Okay.
You made a motion, right?
Yes, I did.
Second? I have a first and second from Trish and Mike, uh, to pay the voucher. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Let be known, it passes four zero.
I have payroll vouchers in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-three cents.
Make a motion for payroll of a hundred and fifty thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-three cents.
One second. I have a first from Trish and a second from Brian on the payroll. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Let be known, it passes four zero.
Who's second in that?
Brian.
Brian.
Okay. Sorry, I was reading. Um, I have wastewater vouchers in the amount of five hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and thirty-six cents.
Make a motion to approve wastewater at five hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and thirty-six cents.
I'll second. I have a second from Brian, uh, to pay wastewater voucher. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Let be known, it passes four zero.
And while those are going around being signed, I just want to give you guys an update on the website as well. We did meet with a photographer, a local photographer here in the community who already has several pictures of the town in his portfolio. So he is willing to give us a price on using those pictures, a per picture price, which is going to save us quite a bit of money on the website as far as getting the photography for the backdrops of the facilities and pictures around the town and stuff like that. So I don't have a price on that yet, but we did meet with someone local on that, and I think that's a really good option. So we're moving along with getting that up and going.
Do you think we have it done by the end of the year?
The goal is, we're hoping to have it done by the end of the year. It just, a lot of it just depends on how soon we get them the information that they need, so.
Very good.
It's been a draw now, I'm not sure.
Huh?
It's been a long time.
Well, it's just, it's a lot more than you think going into it on how much is involved. So once we, we're working on the pictures, we'll be working on getting them to forms and editable, editable formats and stuff like that, that's hard to say.
Big word, yeah.
Okay, uh, do we have a motion adjourned?
Is it a second? A second.
I have a first from Mike and a second from Trish, uh, during the meeting of tonight. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Let be known, it passes four zero. Good night, everybody.
Thank you.